I would like to listen to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those watching at home, you'll notice one change tonight. The mayor is on a well-deserved vacation, so Mr. Coyne is serving as acting mayor, and I, as president of council pro tem, will serve as seat council president this evening.
Congratulations.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Present.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. Shields.
Mr. Simpson.
I move that we, the minutes submitted by the clerk for the March 8th meeting be submitted at this time, be accepted.
Second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on the minutes?
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committee. The finance meeting was held before tonight's council meeting. Our next finance meeting will be on Monday, April 12th. Public properties, while I, I'll go ahead and, no meeting scheduled and no report this Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Health and safety will, and sanitation, hopefully we'll have a meeting sometime scheduled in April since we've had a, our new fire chief hired, and I'll meet with Mr. Piccoli and the police chief, and we'll go over some of the requests and things that they would like to see happen this year in their prospective departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Special legislation committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Special legislation held a meeting on March 9th, and at the meeting, we had two things on the agenda. One was a discussion about demolition, and the second one was a ordinance on feeding wild animals. We're going to continue the discussion on the demolition, but we passed the ordinance on feeding wild animals out of special legislation during that meeting and sent it to finance committee, and finance committee tonight forwarded that ordinance on feeding wild animals, approved it rather, and it will go to council in two weeks, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you.
Streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. I have no meeting scheduled and no report since we haven't had a meeting, but I do want to state that we did get a grant for the East Reagan Parkway lighting, which has been in the streets and sidewalks committee for quite a while, so I'm looking forward to that moving forward with that project.
Your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Hefinger. Water and utilities committee, Ms. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This mic seems very loud. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Emergent technologies committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several. Twenty-one fifty-seven budget amendments. Twenty-one fifty-eight amended code 133.01 association memberships police. Twenty-one fifty-nine general liability insurance renewal, USI Argonaut Insurance Company. Twenty-one sixty, plan year 20 chip tenant-based rental assistant contract MMHA. Twenty-one sixty-one MCRC facility monitor temporary assignment. Twenty-one sixty-two amend seventy-nine dash seventy-nine nineteen program and activity rate change proposal for the MCRC. Twenty-one sixty-three sponsorship banner approval. Twenty-one sixty-four cooperating, cooperative purchase agreement, ODOT sodium chloride. Twenty-one sixty-five capital grant application acceptance ODNR East Reagan Lighting. Twenty-one sixty-six Ohio EPA level-two electric vehicle charging stations grant, and twenty-one sixty-seven transfer city-owned property on West Liberty Street to Medina City Development Corp. Reports of municipal officers, acting mayor, Mr. Coyne.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Just a little update, I'll be addressing one ordinance, ordinance number forty-nine twenty-one this evening. Also like to thank the department heads for doing a great job, is working under my tutelage. The city's running well. I appreciate it. Everything's doing quite well. I'd also like to thank the esteemed members of council for all that they do on behalf of the city. You do a great job. Sometimes you're underappreciated, but you do a great job, and I think all of us here at the city and department heads appreciate your efforts, and I hope to continue to work with you on many different items. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Coyne. We appreciate those kind comments. Keith Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reminder that the city of Medina does have an income tax. Residents are required to file. If you need assistance with that, it's RitaOhio.com. They collect the income tax for us, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mr. Greg Huber, Esquire, Law Director, City of Medina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Ms. Kimberly Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Mr. Jonathan Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. City engineer, Mr. Pat Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to announce, even though this project's not strictly in the city limits, it will affect a lot of the city residents. Next week, ODOT is starting their project on State Route 3. Starts approximately Fenn Road and goes up all the way to I-71. It's 150 days long, and starting next week, traffic will only be maintained southbound only. There'll be no northbound traffic between 71 and Fenn Road for about 150 days. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Service director, Nino Picoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Any thanks to council or anything you want to ask?
Always appreciative of council, especially now with the group we have up there.
Thank you, Mr. Picoli.
Anybody you want to single out there, Nino?
And finally, Police Chief Ed Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief. Notices, communications, and petitions, we have one tonight, a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new C2 permit to Rivalry Brews LLC doing business as Rivalry Brews, first floor, 124 Lafayette Road, number 101.
Move not to object.
Second. Any discussion?
I have just one question, Mr. President. Are they acting as a restaurant, or are they just brewing on site?
Mr. Mendel, do you know anything about, I, for some reason, I remember reading something about this, but I...
I know none of the details of what the, what they do at this specific address.
I think, Mrs. Hazelton, it might be where they coordinate craft brews from around the state, and then they distribute different craft brews.
Gotcha.
I don't think they're actually selling...
I don't object regardless. I was just wondering.
Okay. If there are no other comments, then would the clerk please call the roll on the not to object?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed at the chair, and a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes, will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. We do not have anybody here, but is there anybody that would like to address council, or is there anybody on Facebook? Okay. Thank you. All right. We will proceed on then to our introduction of, in consideration of ordinance and resolutions. First tonight, motion to suspend, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance thirty-nine twenty-one, resolution forty-dash-twenty-one. Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-one, ordinance forty-two dash twenty-one. Ordinance forty-three dash twenty-one, ordinance forty-four dash twenty-one. Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-one, resolution forty-six dash twenty-one. Ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-one, and ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Ordinance thirty-nine twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Medina County Board of Commissioners in the city of Medina for Medina TV Production Services of county programming.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Shields.
Mr. Simpson.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to submit it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance, Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as you saw from council last meeting, where we donated equipment to the county commissioners. This kind of goes hand in hand with that. We started during this COVID crisis back almost a year ago in assisting the county through their times of getting through the process of getting their technology streamlined to cover their meetings. They liked the agreement so much that we came to a conclusion to work as a partnership. They will pay the hours when our staff is there, so we will collect that on a quarterly basis, and that created, thanks to Mr. Huber's help, our memo of understanding that you see before you hear this evening. The reason for the emergency clause is just that services had be, have started, we've started work on this since the latter part of February, as we want to make that retroactive to that date and continue to do our production with them, and a good way for us to expand and have a good partnership with the county and the city.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. We certainly appreciate everything Medina TV does for the city, and I know the county commissioners in the county are very appreciative of your help as well. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, there's twenty-one passes six zero.
Resolution forty-dash-twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Supreme Court of Ohio for the 2021 technology grant for the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? I don't believe we have anybody here from the court this evening, but I know at our finance meeting two weeks ago, it was explained that this was a grant that they had received, and this is kind of the final steps for the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the court for them to receive the technology grant. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution forty-dash-twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending section 31.14L of the Salary and Benefits Code of the City of Medina relative to sick leave.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is going to clarify the requirements for an employee to cash out on used sick time at the time of leaving the city. The current statute says that they can only do that at the time of retirement, and it's always been a little bit of a question, what constitutes retirement if they are leaving but not retiring right away, if they are eligible but they have to wait a few more years, things like that. The new ordinance will clarify that if they have 10 years and provide the proper notice, they'll be eligible to cash out sick time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-one, there's twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-two dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending section 3105 of the Salary and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the building official pay grade.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This request is to, for a pay judgment for the chief building official, Dan Gladish. It's a salary pay grade from one thirteen, increase from 113 to 114, which is about a five, which is approximately a 5% annual salary increase. The, this is being requested due to not only his great service to the community and to the city administration as well, but also due to significant certifications he's received through the state of Ohio, Ohio Board of Building Standards and the International Code Council. These include plans examiners for mechanical, building, electrical, in addition to combination plans examiner. These certifications would then allow the City of Medina Building Department to perform in-house plan examinations for commercial projects. Currently, we rely on two third-party architectural firms to perform those reviews. The benefit of this in-house plan review is expediting review time for commercial construction projects in the city. This could save the city up to $38,000 a year. We would still have the third-party plan examiners because we have to by state code as backup for the department, but I would request that this pay increase be approved to benefit our building official, Dan Gladish, and also just the great work that he's been doing for the City of Medina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you. Just today, I received a very complimentary statement from a resident on how well Mr. Gladish works with the businesses, works with the people to make sure that whatever they need to do, whatever they need to accomplish, it gets done the proper way and quickly. He moves every roadblock conceivable. They were very impressed, very happy, and they want to clone him.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-two, twenty-one passes six zero.
Thank you. Ordinance forty-three dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance number 157 dash 20 past September 14, 2020, relative to West Liberty Storm Sewer Improvement slash City Hall Parking Deck Detention Project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to submit it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Thank you. Any discussion on either the emergency clause or the ordinance? Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned, council did authorize this project originally last fall. We did receive bids. Unfortunately, none of the bids we received were within the project's budget, so the Board of Control was forced to reject them. We would like to rebid the project. This ordinance will increase the budget to $204,000. Asking for the emergency clause because we'd like to get this detention system in as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-three, twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-four dash twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2021 concrete street repair program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual project to replace miscellaneous pavement sections throughout the city. As with last year, this year, we're requesting $500,000 for that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-four, twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the final resolution and execution of all documentation between the Ohio Department of Transportation and the City of Medina for the State Route 18 corridor improvement project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to submit it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Any discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our, will be our agreement with ODOT relative to State Route 18 project. This project has been awarded by ODOT to Fetcho Excavating, a local contractor, and they're looking to get started as soon as possible. ODOT is requesting the emergency clause. They were delayed on their end in submitting the invoice and this paperwork to us, and because the contract's been awarded, they would request payment as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any further discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-five, twenty-one passes six zero.
Thank you. Resolution forty-six dash twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the Ohio Regional Development Corporation on behalf of the City of Medina, Ohio, to file an application for grant assistance through the Plan Year 2020 Targets of Opportunity Cares Act, CDBG slash CV grant funding.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to submit it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This property, this grant is one that was created through the Ohio Department Development Services Agency at the state of Ohio to specifically use CARES Act dollars from 2020 for necessary facilities as part of a, kind of the CDBG umbrella. This is a project for a facility in the city that's a critical part of our community. They need to use this, these dollars in this grant for HVAC improvements. That would cover materials and labor. We are working with our consultant for CHIP, Ohio Regional Development Corporation, to manage this under our current grant with them, with them, our current contract with them, and that way, this would be able to get their, get this into the community and to this facility here in the city of Medina. The emergency clause is requested because this project has begun, the target project property has other improvements to it have been performed, are performed, being performed with other funding sources, so this grant would help add to that and keep the project moving on a timely basis, so I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Resolution forty-six, twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure to the Ohio Regional Development Corporation, ORDC, for the administration of the Plan Year 2020 Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP Program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion on the ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is to contract with ORDC to pay them to manage and implement our new CHIP program starting, mainly starting this year. This is the consultant that we've used in the last cycle, and they've done a really good job at it, so we'd like to continue with them. The payments to them is outlined in the, in the ordinance and in the attachments to it. This would be something that would continue the, continue executing the CHIP program that we've had for many, many years. It's been a great benefit to the, to specifics households within the community and just maintaining the housing stock within the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-seven, twenty-one passes six zero.
Ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance number 217 Ordnance 48-21, an ordinance amending ordinance number 217-20 past December 14, 2020, amendments to the 2021 budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two amendments to the budget tonight. The first one is for the Civil Service Commission for testing that was not budgeted for because we don't know what testing we're going to have to do obviously when we're going through budgets. And the second one is for the airport detention base in Pratt.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the role?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 48-21 passes six zero.
Thank you. And finally, ordinance 49-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for the city's property and general liability insurance for the period of April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
The emergency clause has been requested. I'd move to submit it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Thank you. Discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Acting Mayor Coyne?
Thank you, Mr. President. This came through our broker, and it's with USI Insurance Services LLC and Aggronad Insurance Company. This is our annual property casualty insurance coverage for the City of Medina, which covers our buildings and contents for about $61 million. Last year, the premium for 2020 was $194,178. This year, the total premium is $270,098, of which includes a broker fee of $10,500, which is the same brokerage fee that the city has paid over the previous four years. And it also has terrorism coverage with a premium of $4,463. The reason emergency clause is requested on this is because it binds effective April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022. So I respectfully request that the emergency clause be added and approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Any further discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? If not, would the clerk please call the role on the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
And any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the role?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordnance 49-21 passes six zero.
Counsel comments. Mr. Simpson's hand went up first. I was actually going to have you fill first, Mrs. Hazel Time.
I think all of us are going to say something, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank Acting Mayor Coyne for his kind comments about counsel and thank Mr. Shields for his filling in for Mr. Coyne as council president. Which brings me to some of the comments that have been in, been made in the local news media and on, I've seen several things on Facebook about it. From the previous Save the Courthouse Committee to the now Stop Government Waste Committee. As a citizen and as a council member, I'm kind of offended by some of the accusations that's being made by this group. I've pretty much kept my mouth shut for the election that previously happened this last November, but I can't be silent anymore. I am going to, I do support the language that's on the ballot and the issue that's on the ballot on May 4. You know, I don't, I don't like to use the word lie, but I think there's been some, I'll use the word less than truthful. There's been some less than truthful comments made in the media from the now Stop Government Waste Committee. One that City Council and the administration has had secret meetings. That is less than truthful. That the City Council and the administration had approved the spending of money for the current parking deck outside of City Hall. We used that funds and built that parking deck specifically for the use of the new retail and apartment complex that's going to be happening, and I'm grateful for sometime this summer or next spring on West Liberty. That is less than truthful. That is not why the parking deck was, was built. There's just been so many things, you know, initially when the Save the Courthouse Committee formed their committee, I can't speak for everybody on council, but I think everybody agreed that, that we wanted to save the 1969 courthouse and the 1841 courthouse and the, and the public, the prosecutor's office, the whole east side of the public square. And, and through working with the county and through the Save the Courthouse Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, those, those buildings were saved long before the election. But they kept using less than truthful tactics when they, when they campaigned that the 69 courthouse was going to be torn down. That was less than truthful. And when, after the election and the voters voted for us not using any city funds in the current county courthouse project unless we went back to the voters. And that's what we did. You know, I'm, I'm so proud of, of everybody on this dais and the administration. Over the years, the tenure that I've been here, we've worked closely with and save, excuse me, save tax dollars, a lot of money in the city and in the, in the, in the county by working with the county commissioners, by working with the Medina School District, by working with the surrounding townships. So saying that, that we're doing anything underhanded with the, the current request for the May 4 election to spend funds to go into the 1969 courthouse, anything that is not above board is just simply less than true. It still will benefit members of the taxpayers of the city that, you know, we are responsible for, for funding part of the municipal court, and we are, we're saving dollars. We're going to have to do something one way or another. And as a board, this board and the administration, a lot of work and effort, all above board. Nothing, nothing secretly has transpired. So I just want to get that off my chest and, and I hope everybody's enjoying this beautiful weather. I know there's going to be more to come. The virus, as long as people can get vaccinated, I think we see light at the end of the tunnel. And I just ask everybody to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Ms. Hazel Time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start things off with something positive before I move on to the more serious subject. This weekend, I had a really cool opportunity. I live across the street from former Ward 1 Councilman Chet Simmons, and then down the street on Washington is former Ward 1 Councilman John Wetzel. So we just all happened to be on the sidewalk outside Mr. Wetzel's house at the same time. So it was actually really cool. It was three generations of Ward 1 council people. So that was, that was a highlight of my weekend. But regarding the courthouse, Mr. Simpson has said that he has sat on it and he's sat on it for too long. I think that the public has gotten to know me as much as you can over the past year and a half, and I don't sit on things. I am not afraid to say what I think, how I think things should be, and I'm not going to remain silent now either. Myself, as a private citizen, myself as a councilwoman, I think that what we're putting on the ballot is absolutely the best thing for the city. One of the most difficult things of being a councilperson is that you have to balance the needs, in my case of my ward, and what's best for the city. And I was just walking this weekend, getting people's opinions. You know, I had, I had shared before, it was my goal to reach everyone in the ward before COVID hit. So I've restarted my efforts. And I've talked to people and I've explained that this is the best option. It's very frustrating to see things that are uncategorically, are untrue. They are lies. And I am not afraid to call it out and say it for what it is. It disappoints me that people spend their time and their money and their energy working against their city when they can put so much positive energy into doing something really great, which is what we have come up with. As far as funding that parking deck and we're having these secret meetings and, trust me, I have big mouth. I can't keep a secret. So if there was a secret meeting, probably everyone would know about it. But building that parking deck for, you know, private business or for the new apartments that are going in, I'm going to be honest with you, that's ridiculous. That's not what we had planned. Mr. Lamb recently was in the paper about using that municipal court building for an alternate purpose. And I think in this, I gotta give Mr. Lamb credit because this is his quote, but working together with the county is a good thing. Why else would do people get married? They want a partner. They want to work together to accomplish their goals. And that's what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to do what's best for the city. I'm trying to do what's best for my residents. And I am deeply saddened by the lies that are being spread by, I don't even know what their name is now because they keep changing names in an effort to confuse voters. But I'm sure you'll get a lot of great social media comments about this, but that's why I'm here. I'm here to tell the truth and I'm here to call out people that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I sit up here very proudly representing Ward 1 and our city, and I encourage you to vote yes on this piece on May, in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazel Time. Mr. Heffinger?
Okay.
Just going to echo what's already said.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. I too echo councilperson Hazel Time's and Simpson's comments here. I am offended. I've not been on council as long as Mr. Simpson or Mr. Shields or Mr. Coyne, but I've had an interest in the city for a long time. I've always been one to try to find ways to save money for the city in some way, shape, or possible, save tax dollars. It's one of the things that I ran on back in 2009, not to increase the taxes, but to increase the tax base so that we have more people paying in a lower amount. And I think we've been successful with that. Here too, the vision of this city has been to take a piece of property, which we still own. The city will still own that property that the West Liberty Apartments are going to go on. And there'll be a lease agreement that's still being worked out. But the part of the building of the parking deck was for a courthouse use, for City Hall use, as well as for the use of the general public, which would include the retail space and apartment space that's in that there. So it's always been part of the plan. That's why we put those, put that together the way we did. There's also a TIF in, in how that's paid. And maybe sometime in the future, we'll, we'll have a lesson on how that's being, how we will get our money back from that. But in short, we're not paying for that, that parking deck. The developer's paying for the parking deck. And I'll leave that for Mr. Coyne, who's much more knowledgeable than that on I. But as far as the lies go, I've been smelling around, and there's got to be another reason for why these people are doing what they're doing. Why they're, they're playing on the emotions of the public and saying they're wasting government, they're wasting government, and they're throwing everybody over that way when the real problem might be over here. And I, and based on a letter that we received on January 24th from the domestic relations judge, Judge Mary Kovak, she wrote, it's a two-page letter, and the last three items were her idea on why she thinks she should have her own courthouse. And there can only be one reason for her to write that is because she thinks she should have her own courthouse and not participate. That's the only reason I can come to. So I think Bob Finin, The Gazette, The Plain Dealer, The Sun News, and whatever other newspapers should investigate that and find out why they're telling these lies about us. Find out why the judge thinks she should have her own courthouse and why the residents of the City of Medina shouldn't be allowed to save their money in cooperating with the county in participating in doing the courthouse. The ship has sailed for us to participate in the new courthouse, so our next best option is to rehab the 1969 courthouse. And so I'm going to start, with the help of my lovely wife, we're going to start the Preserve History Together, Make History Together campaign here to promote the vote yes on the issue, to allow the city to spend the money to rehab the courthouse on the square. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Listen, we have, we have over these past decades built quite a community, and it wasn't, wasn't by luck and it wasn't by accident. It didn't just happen. It was a lot of good people working together, coming up with great solutions, doing the hard thing, and getting results. And I think you see those results every day. When you, wherever you live in town, whatever neighborhood you live in, you see the results of the hard work of people that came before us and the people that are here now. That's why we have what we have. The things that have gone on that, that Councilman Hazel, Councilwoman Hazel Time and Simpson and Mr. Rose have, you know, you don't need to believe, believe all that, things that have been said. I mean, we know that's just a bunch of hooey. It is a distraction. We have an opportunity, we have a once in a long time opportunity to do some really, to continue to do some really great things. And this is an opportunity that may not come again, and it won't come again. You know, it's, it's so unique. We have worked together with the county. We have a plan. We have an issue on the ballot, starting early voting on May, on April 6. And there is no question about it. We need you to come out and we need you to come out and vote yes for issue one, period. It is a money saver. Think about it. It puts our muni court, where the Pillared Courthouse is on the square, smack right in the middle of the historic district. And when you think about it, the name on top of the Pillared Courthouse will become the Medina Municipal Court, right on the east side of the square. A complex directly in front of the new construction from the county. A cost-saving effort. Vote no, and that won't happen, and we will spend more money. That's a fact. Those are the facts. Much of what you're reading, counter to what I'm saying, is just a bunch of hooey. You know us. You've seen the results of what the people on council and the administration have done. So you can comfortably go to the, go to early voting, go on voting day, and vote yes for issue one. And then you can be part of the realization that we have done something that I think only one other county rarely does with the city, and that is we have formed a partnership with, with the county, worked together, and come up with a good solution in spite of, in spite of the opposition that we have had from, from this group that y'all have, y'all here have talked about. Secondly, I had the thought that, that since we're going to go to the ballot and vote yes on issue one, one thing that I think we can consider is that there are, there are city schools in almost in every ward, multiples in some wards, I believe. And I'm not sure if the muni court is in Ward 1, but it's on the border of Ward 1 where there really is no, in an area where there is no school. And when I look around here, when I'm up here anyway, sometimes I have a lot of memories of people that have been here with me over the years. And of course, one of those people was the former council president, Wilda Bell, who I knew well and worked with. She and I spent a lot of time together with Reverend Burton over in Ward 1. We had a saying, Ward 1 gets it done. And Wilda Bell, the only, the only person of color actually ever elected to city government in Medina, Wilda Bell was a force. She was a force for good, a hard worker in Ward 1. And I thought, one of the possibilities we have, if y'all go out and vote yes on Ward 1, is we'll have an empty building here. And other people on council might have a different idea. They might not. But it would be a great place to have a community center, and if we had one, we would want to name it for Wilda Howard Bell, that powerful councilperson. One of the bravest people I believe I ever knew was Wilda Bell. So I'm hopeful that you, you give some thought to what each, each of us have talked about tonight and take a look around the town and see what a great place we've all built together. And it's starting on April 6. You go on out and vote for issue one and do the right thing, and then we can continue to build, build this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to add, I guess the two things that have struck me during this whole course of this discussion about the courthouse is I see signs that say Stop Government Waste. I can't think of a group or an administration who do more to not waste government dollars. We have a five-year budgeting process because we take it very seriously. We have the lowest income tax rate of a city our size that we stretch very far. I think everybody in this administration will tell you that this council, it is very hard to get money approved. We are very tight with taxpayers' dollars, as they're all raising their hands here.
We're all pointing at John.
But we take it very seriously, and we do not waste government funds, just the opposite. We try to do as much as we can for our residents without asking for more and making do with what we have. So I do not think this is a group or an administration that ever wastes government money. The second thing I think about is, Mr. Coyne and I have been working on this muni court issue for 20 years. And many times, we have not been able to solve this issue because we didn't believe that we should spend the money that was being requested for a muni court. But right now, at this time, we have the administration's seven council members who feel this is a good deal for taxpayers. And we have put a lot of time and effort into figuring out the best thing to do for this muni court. We know it needs to be improved. We know it needs to be enlarged. We have a great opportunity to take this building on the square that all of us want it to keep. We never wanted to see it torn down. And if we can get that municipal court in there, I think that ensures that that building is going to stay on the square for many years, which is what all of us wanted from the very beginning. So I just ask residents to please talk to any of us, talk to the administration, talk to council members. We will be glad to tell you about why we think this is a good use of taxpayers' money and why we take your tax dollars very seriously when we make these decisions. And we take a lot of time thinking about what to do and what is best for the taxpayers. So on that note, thank you. If there's no other comments, Mr. Rose?
I do want to add one more thing, if I may. And that's the, the money that's going to be spent for this. Oops, excuse me. The money that's going to be spent for this is not tax dollars. There's not going to be any tax increase. There's not going to be anything coming out of the current budget. It's going to come out of money that's been saved by the courthouse for, I don't know, in excess of 20 years. There's over $4 million that this courthouse has saved. And then we have money that's used for, that has been allocated for special capital projects. And it's going to be, the rest of the money will be coming out of there. And any difference that needs to be made up, the court will be making that up. It will not come out of your tax dollars, in your, out of your current tax dollars. So it's, it is not government waste. The waste is coming out of that law firm across from the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any other comments? On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. I don't know why I just thought that.